All right, everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order of the DeKalb City Council Regular Meeting of September 12th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson? Smith?
Here.
Perkins? McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Six I.
Awesome, and I did wanna let everyone know Alderwoman Larson and Alderman Perkins let me know ahead of time that they were not gonna be able to make it tonight. Life does get in the way, as we all understand. All right, moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, can I have Mr. Hy-Vee himself again come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Shadow Gentry, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks as always, Shadow. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
All right, the agenda has been approved, moving on to Presentations, we have none. Moving on to Public Participation, I do have someone, Joe Schultz, if you could come up and address the council. As a reminder, we only have three minutes in order to do that. Yes, if you'd right up to the podium here, that way it's being recorded, so it's part of the public record, and those watching remotely will be able to hear you as well.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here on behalf of the common citizen of the city of DeKalb. Probably not surprisingly, I've been very alarmed at the crime that we've seen over the last couple of weeks. And I know I'm not the only citizen who shares this concern. I think if you look at many of the sites on Facebook, you'll find that a lot of people are expressing concerns about the current state of the city of DeKalb in regards to crime. I'm here to suggest that perhaps a city meeting, just some kind of a get-together with the mayor and the chief of police would be a very helpful thing to just assure citizens. I'm very aware of some excellent work that has been done with Hunter Properties. I know, Mayor, that you've been strongly behind that from the get-go. And I think that the chief has also done some really, really wonderful work, and especially over the last couple of weeks. So I want you to know that I'm speaking not as somebody who just wants to complain. I see what people are trying to do, I appreciate it, I think you've done a lot of good things. I think the problem is, is that a lot of people don't realize you've done a lot of good things. And if we could have a get-together, I think it would be a nice gesture to the concerned community. Thank you.
Really appreciate that, Joe, and you're absolutely right, a town hall or whatever it might look like is a really good idea. And Chief and I can talk about that and see what we could do, besides even the crime issue, just an overall state of the community, which would be great. So thanks, Joe, for coming out tonight. And also, I always let everyone know, when your agenda item is completed or your comments are completed, feel free to leave. We have a lot of just regular city business that we get through, so we don't take any offense up here when people get up and leave. So you're more than welcome, after your agenda item has been completed, to go out and exit and live your life in our wonderful DeKalb. All right, moving on to Appointments, we have none. And then moving on to Approval of the Minutes, number one, minutes submitted by the city clerk, we have none. So then, number two, minutes submitted by the Recording Secretary. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council Meeting and Finance Advisory Committee Meeting of August 15th, 2022, and the minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of August 22nd, 2022, by the Recording Secretary?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Comments or questions? All right, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Then moving on to Agenda Item H, Consent Agenda, number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through September 12th, 2022 in the amount of $4,716,223.72. Number two, Investment and Bank Balance Summary through July 2022. And number three, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures through July 2022. Can I have a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
All right, the Consent Agenda has been passed. Agenda Item I, Public Hearings, we have none. Agenda Item J, Considerations, number one, Public Discussion Regarding Redevelopment in the Hillcrest-Blackhawk Area and Annie Glidden North Area. We, this would be our second opportunity for the public to come up to the podium and discuss their ideas on what we should do in that particular area. The first one that we had at our last council meeting, was it the last council meeting, City Manager? Two ago, okay, two ago. Was wonderful, we got an absolute ton of feedback. And then myself and other alder persons have also attended Opportunity Kalb's listening sessions in the community, which has been fantastic. We've heard a lot of ideas, some new, but a lot of recurring themes, which has been really cool. So this is another opportunity for anyone in the audience, if you wanna come up, and give us your ideas on what we should do with the L. And when I refer to the L, I refer to Hunter Hillcrest, and I refer to what used to be the old Blackhawk Theater. We call it an L because the parcel is an overall L. If you have any ideas on what we should do with those particular properties, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium and share with City Council. So is there anyone who would like to come up? Mr. Glenn Robey. Welcome, thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, City Council members and mayor. Couple of things, one of, before I give my personal comments on what I think should happen, I'm gonna take off my citizen hat and put on the Opportunity Kalb hat and say thank you to the alderpersons that attended the listening sessions for Opportunity Kalb. A lot of information was gleaned, we really appreciate you being there and being supportive of the community and supporting the citizens that gave their input. Now, switching to my comments regarding the L. Just wanna make some comments for the public record, and just, this is a concept for the record. I do not have a lot of fine details, but just wanted to put it out there, again, so that others are aware of it. My general idea or concept would be, in the L would be an L-shaped building with commercial on the main level, residential housing on the two levels above. So two levels of rental housing, commercial on the main level. The lower level would include potentially, and again, I'm not married to the side, just throwing some suggestions out there, nonprofit space, potentially a daycare center, and then spaces for student organizations, NIU student organizations, so they could have some identity and some place to congregate. Some of you know that I'm part of the NIU-Greek community, fraternity and sorority place, and there's student organizations that are smaller in size and don't have identity. So some of that retail space would be to provide those organizations with some sort of defined identity. Anyone that is part of the Greek community knows that that's a big issue or a big thing for organizations. So smaller organizations, marginalized student organizations would have that opportunity to be represented. Also, nonprofit and/or incubator space to help develop nonprofit organizations would also be part of that overall space. And then, again, if there would be some sort of service to the general community, as in a daycare or some other service, I'd like that also to be considered as part of that. And two meetings ago, when my associate Kevin Kezier, he talked about kind of an anchoring, the two wings of that with a cafeteria, that's kind of a boiling down, he had much a grander concept, but just wanna reference that concept, anchoring, that I still support. Did support and still support that concept being part of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on ideas they have for the L in the Annie Glidden North Area? All right. Hearing none. And again, this is our second listening session, Opportunity Kalb has put on multiple listening sessions, Alderman Verbic and I were just at one recently. The feedback has been just absolutely phenomenal, and I'm, warms my heart with the amount of public participation that has come out to share ideas on what would be best for that area on those parcels that we currently hold. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, Resolutions, number one, Resolution 2022-076, authorizing a third amendment to a retainer agreement for City Attorney Services, Donahue &amp; Rose, PC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in June of 2019, some of you were on the council when you selected Donahue &amp; Rose as our, to perform our city legal services. At that time, there was a retainer agreement, and that specified a certain level of funding, $16,000 per month, which was very competitive with other such services around northern Illinois. In January of 2021, the firms stepped forward during the height of the COVID crisis and said, "We'd like to reduce that retainer to $15,000 per month." And there was an agreement on that sum, and then a second amendment about a year ago to retain the, the basic retainer at $15,000 per month, but raise the litigation hourly rate $5 per hour. So we've been getting very good service at a very competitive price for a long time. This third amendment, just before you tonight, restores a monthly retainer that was originally negotiated back in 2019. We're very fortunate to have the exemplary work of Donahue &amp; Rose. We support this agreement.
Council, questions, comments? For myself personally, I've reached out to John, but especially Matt on a semi-regular basis, and the responsiveness is one that I always greatly appreciate. But it's also just the depth of knowledge of our community. I could talk about, well, the 200 block of Clark Street, and Matt will be like, "Oh, you mean that brown house?" But it really is that, I mean, they may not be in our community, but they are in our community and completely invested in it. So appreciate the hard work that you continue to do, Matt, and how engaged you are in our community at such an in-the-weeds level is fantastic, so thank you. We need a roll call to approve this, correct? All right, so any other comments or questions? Yes?
I just wanna thank them for making that, that offer to reduce the rate during the pandemic.
Awesome. Thanks, Alderwoman Morris. All right, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2022-076 passes. All right, moving on to number two, Resolution 2022-077, authorizing a professional services agreement with Hampton, Lazini, and Renwick Incorporated for Bridge Construction Engineering Professional Services for the complete replacement of the North First Street Bridge and Lucinda Avenue Bridge in an amount not to exceed $558,845. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, for complicated projects such as this, especially on a tight time schedule next year. We need resident engineering services. Every three to five years, the city goes out and establishes what is known as a pre-qualified list of engineering firms that can do this kind of work. HLR, as they're known, Hampton, Lazini, and Renwick is part of that list of 70 engineering firms. And at the recommendation of our city engineer, Zach Gill, we are bringing forward them as the group that would be well-suited to work on this bridge, these bridge projects. They've also been involved, by the way, in design, early design of the work that has to be done. And so we recommend to you, the contract is before you.
Council, any questions or comments? City Engineer Gill, if you recommend them, that's, that's high kudos for sure, so looking forward to it. And looking forward to these projects, these are gonna be really cool projects, especially First Street. Excited about the underpass that we're gonna have there. Hearing no questions or comments, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2022-077 passes. All right, number three, Resolution 2022-078, authorizing professional services agreement with Hampton, Lazini, and Renwick Incorporated for Construction Engineering Professional Services for the widening and reconstruction of Peace Road near Fairview in the amount not to exceed $160,000. Can I have a motion to bring this exciting project to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, as you can tell by the background, and we've had some conversation about this in our various capital budget sessions. This is a major project with some layers of funding that come from different sources, some private, some public. We have a major contribution to make to this as well. And one of the requirements in, in the funding world, particularly when you're using state funds, and specifically the Surface Transportation Urban Funds, STU funds, we'll just say STU funds, which have been there for decades for uses such as this, you need to have resident engineering services. We've had HLR on the shelf, you just authorize the contract, and we're gonna fill them up next year. This project is something that's familiar to them, they've been working in and around Kalb for a long time. And so we recommend them, as you know, we have been before you with other engineering firms, so we're not piling on here, but this, this is a way that we can spread some of the work around.
Council. Well, there's two road construction projects that I hear about over and over and over again. One is Bethany, between First and Brooks Elementary School, and the other is Peace Road. So it's great to be able to, and I hear plenty others, I don't wanna diminish the other comments of the other neighborhoods that I have heard, for sure. But I'm telling you, those two over and over again, I can't, it's nice that we're making progress on one of them, for sure.
Yeah, and the city engineer and I, since you opened that topic up, are very anxious to get this going. There has been work done, which isn't quite, isn't as noticeable as some of the surfacing would be on Peace Road, but there have been utilities working in the shoulder areas for over a year. Now, we're inching toward that work that people will begin to notice dramatically.
Yeah, it'll be exciting, although we know it's gonna take multi-years to get all the way to the overpass on the railroad. All right, no other questions or comments from Council? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2022-078 passes. And when I say exciting project, that really is exciting project, and this is probably another one that's gonna excite some people. Resolution 2022-079, authorizing the award of a contract, occurring contracting incorporated in the amount of $220,172.69 for the resurfacing of primary access routes within Market Square with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total in an amount not to exceed $240,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of years ago, this was a really hot topic in this chamber, and in the previous chamber. The Market Square Shopping Center has a lot of national retailers. When the development was first envisioned and through the build-out of that development, each one of the parcels that's holding one of those national retailers was considered to be sort of its own entity, if you will. And the, the driveways connecting were all private. A lot of people in and out of there on a regular basis will say, "Well, when's the city gonna repair these streets?" Well, they're not city streets, but working individually with the multitude of large companies that are represented there, it was not fruitful for several years. And so we, with the advice of Matt Rose and Donahue &amp; Rose, we decided to approach the possibility following state guidelines, the state statute, to set up a special service area, which was done by the council back in 2020. That special service area needed to accrue property taxes, a special, extra property tax, if you will, on the parcels that are included in a special service area. And it wasn't just set up by fiat, we had to go through a process, and if 51% or more of the property owners had objected, then we wouldn't have been able to do this, but no one showed to object, and everybody was well notified. So after two years, we've got about $240,000, give or take a little bit of interest, sitting in the fund. We went out to bid to see if we could resurface all the driveways, not all the parking areas, but all the driveways, and there are a multitude of them, a lot of, a lot of lane miles. And we did, we did get Current Contracting to give a low bid of $220,172.69. And so the resolution that's attached to this background item would commit the city to a contract with Current Contracting, and we should see a major change. You've seen some improvements over the years, but not every one of the, the big boxes has been as responsive to keeping the lanes that lead traffic to their buildings in good shape, so I think you'll see a big improvement.
Council? Alderman Favor.
So now that you've, you've mentioned that, so my, my next question is, I guess, have we, what have we decided, or have we decided, that the next large development that comes in, will we be recommending an SSA? Or will there be part of the agreement for the zoning, that they'll, they'll maintain the property in better condition? And how, what will be our steps walking forward?
Great question. Presumably, we learn, we try to learn from mistakes or errors or omissions, and I think if we get another large commercial subdivision such as this one, I think there, there has to be some agreement for common maintenance. And if there isn't, then we have to consider that as part of the negotiation of the terms by which they would be, say, annexed and zoned, or at least zoned appropriately. So I, I think it's very good guidance to consider.
Other comments? Well, almost was a really short meeting. Excuse me.
Alderman Favor answered one of my questions, my second one is, will we have any issues? I mean, are the property owners gonna? I know they probably, well, hopefully they won't object to this, but I mean, we are disrupting their-
They had their chance to object, it's here, it's here now for another 18 years.
No, I realize that, but the next thing is, will we notify them, are we gonna work with them? I'm hoping it'll be all positive, that when they realize what they're getting out of the deal, but am I being optimistic?
I'm, I'm sure they won't be unhappy about it. And it will have to go in stages, there'll be milling and resurfacing involved, and some repair along the side where there are, you know, your shoulders are curving.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're, we're in touch with them.
Well, as you know, this has been a super hot topic on my plate, so I appreciate everything on this one.
As it should be, yeah.
So, thank you very much.
This does not include any mitigation of the panhandling that goes along under, under state statute at the major entrances, but it happens. Maybe during the paving, we'll, we'll have some relief from that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Sorry, I'm searching for the date that we're, we could maybe anticipate this project.
Well, it's gotta be done this fall, so it will be done, yeah.
All right, that's awesome.
Yeah, we, we got a good jump start this year on a lot of different paving projects. We've got some on the agenda tonight. Where do you see the next agenda? So Zach Gill is just gonna parse himself out across most of our territory to see that this happens.
But you can drive.
Go ahead.
They, they keep, keep the plan open till close to Thanksgiving, right, generally, is it?
Yes, yeah, but-
Or later?
So each one of these is doable, you know, and, and so current bidding is telling us, "We can get this done." We'll hold them to it.
Thank you.
And we've had, you know, downtown, we worked very well with them.
Right.
We're happy to work with them, they're, they've been very good to Kalb, but when we lay out these expectations, we assume they'll be met.
Thank you.
Alderman McAdams.
I just wanted to point out, since we were talking about the panhandling problem, that I was recently in Rockford, Illinois, and I saw a sign there that was discouraging people from giving money to panhandlers and instead recommending they give money to social service groups. And I was wondering if we might consider a sign similar to that in that spot, that is always the-
Well, here's, here's the, well, this is a whole other issue, right? But, Matt, you can help me, but, so there's a certain portion of every drive that comes up to the state highway, for instance, that is in the public domain, but most of that area is on private property. So we'd have to have the cooperation of the, of all the tenants who are part of that, that REA, real estate agreement. And that isn't something, I don't know, I don't know if we're gonna get that, so enforcement is a little bit of an issue, people are doing that. Anyway, that's another topic.
I'm about ready to call a tangent alert, yeah.
I don't know where this time would go, but-
Let's just- We'll stick to this one. What I love about projects like this, like Peace Road too, is the amount of people, the amount of residents this is gonna affect positively is really cool. Because so many of us go to Walmart, we go to Lowe's, we go to those areas out there, so it's awesome that we're gonna make an impact out there in our streets. Any other questions or comments about this agenda item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2022-079 passes. All right, moving on to number five, Resolution 2022-080, appropriating the sum of $2 million of local funds, including $1 million of motor fuel tax funds for construction services to widen, improve, and overlay Peace Road near Fairview Drive. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and the title seems a little misleading, is it $1 million, is it $2 million? Don't you know the difference well? This provides a little bit of a slide room here, but what's before you is to allow us to release and contract the STU funds that the state requires authorization for, in terms of matching local funds and a million dollars in MFT funds, that's what this is about, motor fuel tax funds, dollars that we get from the state of Illinois that are received from the gallons sold at the pump. So it's a million dollars, we need to proceed with this if we're gonna use those STU funds.
Council? Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2022-080 passes. Number six, Resolution 2022-081, authorizing jurisdictional transfer of a segment of Annie Glidden Road from DeKalb County to the city of DeKalb. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, we're very pleased, of course, with the development that's going on on the site that the First United Methodist Church has selected to be their new home. It's progressing very well, happy to see that. With the annexation, it moved our jurisdiction line a little bit further north, and so what this does simply is to acknowledge that we've long had an arrangement with the county of DeKalb that as our jurisdiction grows, then we will take that on formally. There is, separate from this, on a practical basis, an ongoing conversation with the county highway engineer and our public works department about plowing and, you know, trading, trying to keep the tax implications lower by cooperating, collaborating in maintenance. So that's not what's at stake here, it's just moving the line a little bit further north up to Health Services Drive. We recommend your approval.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-081 passes. Number seven, resolution 2022-082, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, for the state fiscal year 2023 Downstate Operating Assistance Agreement in the amount of $6,117,668. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got two items on the agenda. This is the smallest item, dealing with our transit system, but it's very important because it's the largest amount of money that we get from any source to help us with the operating requirements of our transit system. So the state program that we're talking about here is the Downstate Operating Assistance Program, known in acronym as DOP. If you hear our transit director asking where the dope is, he's not looking to break the law, he's wondering where his operating income is, and it's right here, sitting before you, We have other sources of revenue that help with our annual outlay, including monies that come over from Northern Illinois University for the student ridership. But with this amount of money, we can proceed confidently into the state fiscal year, which is upon us now, and we recommend your approval of this.
Mike is head of one of the largest transportation systems in the state of Illinois. Don't refer to it as dope, please. All right, Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-082 passes. Number eight, resolution 2022-083, authorizing amendments to the service provider agreements with TransDev Services Incorporated. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman in favor, City Manager.
Thank you. So to set this up, there is relevance of the matter that you just dealt with. Because that $6,117,668 is an increase of $496,272 over last year's dope allocation. And we requested that amount of money because we anticipated that the city, in its position of contracting for the services that are provided, either fixed route or variable, or parent transit, would probably have to fund higher wages this year. And this is even before what we have seen happening in terms of the cost of living here and elsewhere around the state and around the country. So what's before you tonight is a proposal that came from our transit director, Mike Noonkirchen, who has been working with our transit provider, TransDev, which is represented here tonight, in the audience, and certainly is welcome to speak to this as well. This conversation has been addressing a couple of things. We had, leading up to the beginning of the fall semester, information that revealed that there was going to be a slight shortage of drivers ready to go with all the routes that were planned and advertised and so forth, and because of the uncompetitive nature of our different tiers of pay. You've got some extensive background here, I'm not going to go through it all, but we looked at where we were in relation to other transit systems around the state of our size or comparable size, and also we looked at what larger employers are doing in our area so far as the entry level wages for people who might be required to have a special licensure to drive the larger vehicles. And the results are portrayed in a variety of charts and graphs, and it was our estimation, the transit director and I, and I believe TransDev is in agreement on this, that our starting wage, which was in the 1715, I believe it was, range, was at least a couple dollars an hour lower than the average. This isn't the highest necessarily, lower than the average. And in this very changing rate environment, if we were to try to aim a little bit lower, a little bit more conservatively, we'd have to come back to you in another three months or four months, or certainly at the beginning of the next fiscal year in January, and have to deal with this again. So what we've got before you is a number of proposed wages, which in your background are on page seven at the top, for both the fixed routes and the parent transit wages. And they would increase the pay for different lengths of services, so a person who's just been trained to drive a bus, no particular service in the field, would be starting in 17 and 1/4 at $20 as of October 1st of this year. If you had five years of service, then you'd be at $23.50. How does that line up? You can see by the charts on page eight in your background, which our resident, I don't know if we have slides on that, but that would put us at, or just slightly above, the midpoint of what we find in the way of what private employers are doing, and also what other transit systems are doing. There would be costs to this, obviously, but the cost where I started was what we had anticipated as an increase. The costs would be covered by that increase, and there would still be some balance there for other things that may come our way, and within the dope allocation to the city of DeKalb for the year. So the average, starting wage rate average for the heavy-duty buses with a CDL license would be $19.32. So it's up from the 17 and 1/4. But we feel then the city, looking at from just our standpoint, would be in a better position with respect to our contractual obligations to see that all the routes are going to be run, and the TransDev, for its part, will be in a better position to assure us that they will have drivers to run those routes. So that's where we are. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Mike is in the audience tonight, and would also be happy to work on the detail here if you want to get down into that.
Counsel?
Yes, absolutely. Alderman Smith.
Mike, thanks for bringing this forward. I just want to clarify one thing, Bill, and I think you did, that this, we were lucky to get an increase that's based on how many people are riding the system.
Correct.
As a system isn't able to perform to its max, we lose riders, which in turn causes to lose dollars. So a half a million dollars is very good for our system. Offsetting that back to the drivers means the drivers will be more reliable, TransDev will be able to perform at a higher level, and help, I think we've all talked about some of our bigger partners down in the south end of town that needs service, and so this is a win-win all the way around. The other thing is, this is a pass-through. This is not city money per se that is affecting this raise.
That's right. It's not local taxpayer money.
Correct. Yeah, that's something that came up.
That's very important. Thank you for that.
Thanks again.
And I guess I'll hit it one more time. The new development of some very large industrial firms in the south side of the city of DeKalb is demanding that we provide ways for people to get to and from work. And we do have routes serving that area now. As the number of people working in that area on a permanent basis grows, we'll need maybe more routes and more drivers and so forth. If we don't have some expansion in that base to our contract for what, not only what we're paying, but the monies would be available to fuel those new routes, then we'll suffer because the companies can't say, well, I guess we're going to cut back, I guess we're going to go at halftime. They assumed that we would be able to serve them, and I think this is what we need to do. And as Alderman Smith said, we are in a position because of the very generous funding that we get from the state of Illinois to do this.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman in favor.
Mike, I'll just ask you. So I wasn't, you know, I appreciate you making those comments, Alderman Smith, because I hadn't thought about, obviously, the expansion. I was thinking about, like, on a month-to-month basis, or whatever. What is, you know, if we need 100% drivers, what are we seeing because of the wage disparity? What are we seeing? Are we?
Well, right now, excuse me, yeah, make sure I'm captured on mic. Right now, for them to meet the service that we have designed, they would, ideal staffing, and Ryan, you can back me up on this, is 52 drivers. Right now, they're sitting around 40. But here's the thing, is we don't want to just stop it. This is what we want to bring forward and meet the service needs. Right now, we need to start planning for the future, and Alderman in favor, like, one of the things you brought forward a few months ago was just, you know, like, these connections, and, you know, why do we have to ride from this point to the next? And one of the things that we're looking at is, as Bill had mentioned, was, first of all, better serving that south side of the community where we have industrial development, but also trying to establish more direct north-south linkages to the community so that we can, you know, make the service more accessible from, say, the south side up to Walmart. And that will also make that industrial area better served as well. So in answer to your question, right now, they're significantly understaffed. The way they're making it right now is they've brought in hired, you know, hired contract drivers to help cover where they're at, and that's making the service now. And thank you for that. We've been managing to hold the line, but the plan is really, we need to start expansion. And I think this will help set us up for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-083 passes. Moving on to resolution 2022-084, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services as it pertains to participation in the ground emergency medical transport, GEMT program. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. With the very prescient help of our firefighters, local 1236 a couple of years ago, we discovered a program that wasn't particularly well advertised that the state of Illinois offers as money as available for cities of any size, but particularly active cities like ours in terms of medical transports, ambulance runs that we do, to make up for some of the difference, some of the gap between reimbursement we might get from the federal Medicaid system and the actual cost to us of, you know, jumping on the rigs and performing the service and all that needs to be done if we make a delivery to the hospital and the trip back and all the rest of that. We were getting scarcely a quarter of the actual cost. This makes up for most of that difference. And we've been using this, we've been as part of this system now for well over a year, and every year from now on, if we want to remain, and we really want to remain in this program, we have to apply, as we're doing tonight, the resolution before you would allow us to extend our intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services, and we heartily recommend your support for it.
Counsel?
Alderman Smith.
Bill, I'm just going to ask, how much money have we gotten from GEMT?
Well, we're looking right now at, we were hoping to get a little over $1 million a year, and we may be looking at closer to $1.4 million, something like that.
It's better than nothing, is where I'm going, is this has been a very substantial for us.
Now, the fruit of all this, we're putting this now, when we saw that we were going to be getting the GEMT, that's what we refer to it as, funds. The council, in the budget process, determined it was a good idea to focus on capital needs of the fire department for these monies, needs that otherwise didn't have a local source, a recurring local source. Through the use of these funds, the fire department is able to buy two replacement engines this year. And then there will be, you know, the periodic replacement of ambulances and all the pieces that go with those rigs and other things. So imagine, you know, if the ambulances, well, if the engines are 3/4 of a million dollars and the ambulances are not far behind, what that does to our 400 fund, which is the one recurring source of capital dollars we throw our local motor fuel tax monies into. There would be no money to go around for police squads and public works vehicles and all the rest. So this is a godsend right now, and so we heartily recommend that we renew this.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-084 passes. All right, number 10, resolution 2022-085, authorizing payments to municipal emergency services for a complement of self-contained breathing apparatus units and peripherals in an amount not to exceed $390,212.16. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman in favor, City Manager.
City, it just occurred to me, we probably could have simulated this, I could have had the fire chief bring a SCBA down.
Maybe next meeting.
But I think you, yeah, I think you know what we're talking about here. And just back up for a minute. So there are different sources that provide the funding for our operating services. The fire department, the police department, Public Works, we always look for grants as well, and there is one grant program out there that is providing some assistance to us in replacing our SCBAs. They're called the self-contained breathing apparatus, that is just essential to our firefighting efforts and the safety of our firefighters. So that, the need is that, under, you know, federal guidelines, we have to replace this equipment on a certain cycle. 15 years is the maximum service life of the full setup with the oxygen cylinder and a mask and a regulator and the pressure gauges and all the rest of that, shoulder straps, blah, blah, blah. So we're well into our, nearly through our 13th year of service, which is pushing it pretty tight. So we applied for, received an assistance to firefighters grant, an AFG grant, back in 2020, received a notice of specifics of the grant almost toward the end of 2021. That grant was for $251,008. Very pleased to receive that from the AFG agency. Most of that was to be directed to the replacement of the SCBAs, $198,754. A portion of it, $52,255, was to go to the fill station that provides the air cascade that fills the bottles that they take out on the scene. So what's before you here is, there is going to be a local share, which is well in excess of the 10% that was required. The SCBA equipment can be purchased this year. Just because of the timing of things and how long it'll take to get to fill station, it'll be in FY '23 that we get to actually allocate the funds for that, so it won't count against this year's budget. But nevertheless, we want to proceed with a full contract, get things ordered. Two-thirds of it will receive this, before the end of this fiscal year, and the other will be able to allocate next year. So that's what's before you in this resolution. The company that will provide us with all- The company that will provide us with all this equipment and all its parts is Municipal Emergency Services, and their price was not to exceed $390,212.16. And again, the total that the city will have is $214,691.
Counsel. No questions, no comments. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-085 passes. Moving on to number 11. Resolution 2022-086, authorizing payments to municipal emergency services for a fixed cascade air compressor, self-contained breathing apparatus, fill station in an amount not to exceed $75,488. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
This is not apart from what I just explained, but we have two resolutions so that we can clearly root this, the FY '23 receipt in a separate resolution. So this particular one is for the fill station. That's at $75,488, and we ask your support.
Any comments, questions, counsel? Hearing none. Head shaking. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2022-086 passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item L, Ordinance's second reading. We have none. So Agenda Item M, Ordinance's first reading, number one. Ordinance 2022-044, approving a special use permit for antennas and associated communications equipment on top of the building at 507 East Taylor Street, Dish Wireless. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So mounting a antenna of any kind on a building requires a special use permit so that there can be some further public scrutiny of the process and the equipment. And this is something that first goes to the Plan Commission and comes to you. So we're now at the council level with a request that was filed by Dish Wireless, and tonight in our audience, I believe, Joe, Joe, okay, Goldschlack? Wow. Thank you. My name is Nicholas, which is also known as Nichols, Nicholas, but very nice to meet you. One of the things required, so there are different levels of regulation affecting such antennas, particularly if there's a 5G component, and those federal, state, and local. There's not a big realm of, for regulation by local officials such as yourselves. In this case, of course, zoning comes into play. One other area is that we can require some type of an independent engineering consultancy to view whether what's proposed and the way the equipment by the particular vendor is safe according to FCC regulations and guidelines. And Mr. Goldschlack is a member of such an engineering consultancy, Fullerton Engineering Consultants. They were hired by Dish Wireless to address that very question and some other things. And they gave information to our Dan Olson, our planning director, in the preparation of the background for the Plan Commission, which I borrowed liberally from for your background tonight. So what's being proposed by Dish Wireless is to add three new antennas to the top of the 16-story high-rise building at 507 East Taylor Street, Taylor Street Plaza, which is familiar to you. It's owned by the housing authority of the county of DeKalb. In the past, the antennas that have been mounted there have also been required to be muted in their appearance, and there's something pretty clever. In your background, if you had a chance to get into some of the pictures that were provided, you can see what had been done before to conceal those, make it actually look like there's a lot more air than there is equipment. And it's been pretty effective. Haven't had complaints that I'm aware of from the neighbors, because it's quite high there. But in any case, the commission took this up on September 6th, week ago, and voted unanimously to recommend your approval for the special use permit. And that comes to you tonight, and the basis of what we've seen at our staff level, it meets our requirements, aligns with what we understand the requirements laid out most recently by the state legislature. And there was some more tinkering with the small cell type of antenna and transmission back a little over a year ago by the state legislature, and we recommend you support the Plan Commission's request to you.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Who?
Favor?
Oh.
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance 2022-044 passes on first reading. It's my understanding that they would request waiving of second reading?
That's the request.
So I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for Ordinance 2022-044. You're more than welcome to leave at this point, sir. No problem whatsoever. We won't take offense. All right, moving on to number two. Ordinance 2022-045, approving the rezoning of a site at 304 North Sixth Street and associated parking lot from the LI, Light Industrial District, to the LC, Light Commercial District, Martin Garcia Miranda and Paulina Chavez Martinez. Roll call, or sorry, motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna go with, moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Since this was a fight to get this on the floor, which is awesome. That's good to hear. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I, for one, think this is an exciting matter. We have a family that's been involved in providing services and local business for some time now. They're looking to expand. They're in the grocery business, and they also have had experience in restaurant service. And what they're looking to do at 304 North Sixth Street, in a building that's been vacant for some time, used to be, I think, previously, the last use was as a telemarketing center, so just that phrase, you don't hear too much anymore. It's been a while. And happily, there's also a very large 48-stall parking lot right across the street, just to the south. So the zoning is one of the challenges that had to be taken care of. That's why it's before you tonight. The rezoning was proposed in order to provide a grocery, combination grocery and restaurant. And the building has about 9,900 square feet, about 6,800 square feet of that would be used for that grocery store and restaurant. There's currently about 3,100 square feet that are occupied by offices of an agency that would remain in the building. And as you can see by the background, the building may look familiar to you. It's the, we have a conceptual floor plan that's been presented to us. The plan tonight, though, is not the point. It's the rezoning. And the rezoning is consistent with other zoning in the area. The proposed zoning is like commercial. That fits, there is LC zoning to the north and northwest of this particular site. And so with this hurdle passed, the family can, Martin Garcia Miranda is sitting in the front, and...
Welcome.
And is that you? Is that Mrs.? Yes, okay. Okay. And Mike Rourke, who's their attorney, are happy to address any questions you may have, but brings new life to a part of our town that is starting to change, starting to perk up. And we support the request that comes to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Counsel. Alderman McAdams.
Just want to say thank you for this great idea for the neighborhood. It's received overwhelming support online from everyone that I've talked to, and we're looking forward to what you bring to the community. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Morris.
I just have to echo that. Thank you. This is super exciting. It's more exciting now than it was the first time I heard it, so thanks.
Any others? Alderman in favor.
No, I was just gonna say, add to all the comments of just, you know, thank you for your investment in DeKalb and in the neighborhood. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
I think it's probably unanimous, and I would say the same thing. It's fantastic that you all are looking to continue to invest in DeKalb, and boy, I'm really looking forward to coming by and trying some new cuisine, which is fantastic. So thank you, and thanks for all your hard work on this. Hearing no other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance 2022-045 passes on first reading. I would take a...
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for Ordinance 2022-045. So good luck. Get out there. You got a lot of work ahead of you, so. And as I've been telling everyone else, you all have waited patiently. You're more than welcome to leave. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. All right. Moving on to number three. Ordinance 2022-046, approving the rezoning of the site at 311 dash, or 311 through 317 North Fourth Street and 321 Oak Street, First United Methodist Church and associated parking lot from the RC-1 Residential Conservation District, public to the PD-C, Plan Development Commercial District, Jacob Tennant, Egg Toy Studios Design Incorporated. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, and I'm gonna say, seconded by Alderman McAdams?
Sure.
All right. Wonderful. City manager.
Thank you very much. And I think this is exciting, too. There is a gentleman, Jacob Tennant, who's a very talented gentleman, who has, with some of his associates, started a building, excuse me, a business in the Sycamore area and the old Anaconda complex, and has done some remarkable things. So he is at once an art studio, provides exhibit space. He is a welder, a very, very proficient and talented welder that does some very fine things and some slightly larger things. You want a chandelier? Phew. You want some furniture? Phew, you know? And his associates are just as talented. Well, they've been looking for more space. And the church is of interest to them, partly because of the location, partly because of the square footage inside and the large open area in the sanctuary, and inside offices and so forth. But also because it's unique.
Yeah.
They do unique work, and they feel that they would be challenged to be more creative in this space than other older industrial spaces, so.
How cool is that?
It is cool. So I've made a couple of visits to Mr. Tennant's current place of operation, and it's really remarkable. You go from one room to another, and it's a different feel in each place. And there's no noise, and there's work going on, but there's no noise, so it's not a pure industrial operation. What had to happen was that before he would enter an agreement to actually acquire this from the Methodist Church, he needed to know that the zoning would be consistent with what you envisioned. So what's proposed is to make this plan development. I want to thank Dan Olson for working creatively with them to try to come to something that would work for all concerned. And the Plan Development Commercial District would be consistent with other zoning in the area. There is a very large parking lot across the street which would serve for, and there it is, on the aerial, for the customers. And if there are events, and there are not exhibits going all the time, but we feel that it could be accommodated in an area where there isn't a lot of parking, so this is a real advantage to them. The understanding that we appreciate is that if this is ultimately approved and goes to sale, Mr. Tennant would basically lease back the space to the church until the new church is completed on Annie Glen Road. So it's a good thing for both parties, good thing, I think, for the neighborhood. We haven't had any complaints from persons who were receiving notices for the planning and zoning discussion. So it comes to you with the Planning and Zoning Commission's unanimous support, six to zero, our staff recommendation, and I believe the neighborhood. So happy to answer any questions you may have. I didn't see, is Jacob in the room? There he is.
Hello, sir. Counsel, any questions or comments? No?
I guess this is another super fun one. I know we noted that at the beginning, but there's really nothing more satisfying than doing business like this and watching the community flourish and grow, one small business at a time, or large business, however you want to refer to your business. But we're excited. Thank you.
City manager.
I've been dying to say this. So many people have gone to this church for inspiration. I think they're going to continue to go to this building for inspiration.
That's cool. Yeah. Any other comments, counsel? I agree, to bring, to, for the church to find this use, and I agree 100% that there'll be continued inspiration in there. It's just phenomenal. Myself, I got my Eagle Scout in the basement of that church. But the history in there, that whether it's kids like me and Boy Scouts or parishioners going there, I mean, that church has a lot of history in our community. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. And to find this kind of a use for creative talent to be there, to just continue that mission of that building, I think is wonderful. And with all the enhancement commission, I'm sure, is excited to have you all to come to our community. Public art continues to come up more and more, and the mural projects that we're funding as a city, and the potential to utilize you all to help us create even more art in the community and help bring that emotional connection for people to make with the city of DeKalb is phenomenal. So super looking forward to this getting to close and you all moving to the city of DeKalb. Excited about it. All right. No other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance 2022-046 passes on first reading. Take a motion to waive second?
Moved to waive second reading.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for Ordinance 2022-046. Fantastic. Good luck, sir. Yeah. These are the nights you love, being on counsel, for sure. Moving on to Agenda Item N, Reports and Communications. Counsel members, who would like to kick us off? Alderman Favor.
So this coming Saturday, the local Experimental Aircraft Association will be giving airplane rides to... rides to young children, older children. I think the age limit is eight years old.
Oh, so I can't go.
You can go. If you've never had an airplane ride, you can go. It'll be at the airport, DeKalb Airport, nine to 11 in the main hangar.
Awesome. Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
I held my board meeting last week. Attendance, about 20 people. Thank you both chiefs for being there, Zach answering a lot of questions, and city manager. I never knew a fire truck had a new truck smell, but the new truck looks fantastic. I saw the guys are very, the fire department is very excited on that. It's a great truck. If anybody wants to stop down, I'm sure chief would show them that truck there vigorously, trying to equip it. But it's a very modern and unique truck. But again, thank you for allowing us to have it down there. That's it.
Chief, don't worry when the new police cars come in. We'll come by to see if they have that new police car smell, too. Alderman Morris?
I just want to note, you know, the passing of September 11th and what that means to us as a nation, so my heart goes out to everyone touched by that, all of us, I guess.
Yeah, it's amazing how many of us, in various ways, have all been impacted by that, well, I can't call it a singular event, but that singular day, for sure. Alderman Verbic?
Contracts are out for resurfacing the Loop Ethanol, so that main drive is expected to be completed by Halloween. So we're all anxiously awaiting that. Concrete work is finished up, and that will help accelerate the project. Additionally, huge congratulations to Opportunity DeKalb and all the residents and students that participated in our sessions to discuss the future of Antiglen North neighborhood. Very exciting. Look forward to council discussion and decision as to that direction.
Awesome.
That's all.
For me, I don't think I commented at the last council meeting, but city manager Nicholas, myself, superintendent of the school district, president of the school board, and finance director, all met to have our initial conversations of, there's a lot of EAV coming to our community, and we're all gonna benefit as a taxing body, so what is it gonna be our plan for figuring out how we make sure the residents of our community also feel that and benefit from that? The discussions around the levy and the tax rate. So it was a great discussion, and I'm really looking forward to future discussions with them on how everyone, not just the taxing bodies with the increased revenue, but us as individual residents, are also gonna feel the gain of all the economic development that this council has done a great job driving in our community. Met with, or I'm on the FSA board, so we had our FSA board meeting. If you haven't heard, Use Service Bureau has merged with the Family Service Agency, which is phenomenal. That's just gonna strengthen the services that the Use Service Bureau can be able to provide, but it's also wonderful that that organization will continue and now thrive potentially even more by having that association. So that was great. I got to do something new, too. I facilitated Congresswoman Underwood's town hall. She was out here at the DeKalb Municipal Airport, DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport, and boy, she must have had 50 to 70 people out there. It was a packed house, and it was a great discussion, great questions. And Congresswoman Underwood has always been an advocate for DeKalb, and her jurisdiction touched the airport, but when the redistricting happens, we will be in her jurisdiction. So it's great to have someone at the federal level who is already an advocate for our community, but now will even be more vested in the success of the city of DeKalb, which is great. Went out to the First National Bank Challenge, which is always a fun event, seeing all our high schools out there, high schoolers out there from DeKalb and Sycamore, going head to head, keeping that old rivalry, you know, alive and well, which was phenomenal. It's too bad DeKalb came home, the varsity team came home with a loss, but there's always next year. Also, hosted a community meeting on violent crime. City manager and I met with quite a few organizations, religious leaders, community leaders, landlords, in light of all the different issues that we have right now when it comes to violent crime. I wanted to call a quick meeting. We had an older person show up as well to start the discussion on what are we gonna do? You know, it's, they talk about it takes a village to raise a child. It's gonna take a village to address this particular situation, and it's, you know, in some ways, it is, I don't mean, we've had such a great meeting, but I don't want to be too melancholy about it, but this is a significant issue facing our community right now that we need to do something about. And I know council feels, just the way I do, that it needs to end, and it needs to end tomorrow. Now, I know that's unrealistic. We need to have a lot of conversations. We need to figure out how all of us together are gonna work to creating a safe neighborhood for every single solitary resident that lives in DeKalb. And I don't care if they moved here tomorrow or yesterday, or if they've been here for 20 years. It doesn't matter. Everyone that lives in the city of DeKalb deserves to be able to raise their family and come home at night to a safe environment, to a healthy environment, and we are gonna work intensely towards the success of that going forward. Joe, I really appreciate you coming out, your idea of a town hall on that. You're right, we need to have more communication about what has been done, which people need to know, but then also, what are we gonna do going forward, and also just getting more people involved in that particular conversation. So I took that to heart, and we're gonna move forward with some sort of event like that. So thank you, and thanks for your comments. On that note, I did a police ride along from 8:00 PM to 3:00 AM. Chief, I've said it before, this is my third ride along. My gosh, our police department, how respectful, how tolerant, how understanding, how patient they are, always just amazes me. And that goes to show not only the training that they go through, but also, obviously, the standard that we hold all of our new recruits to during the interview process. So I was with, I don't know his rank, but Bolshmity, most of the night, and he was just wonderful. Worked with Sergeant Wilkins, Sergeant Sonny, can't remember Sonny's last name. Yep, yep. But really got to see and experience from pop-up parties to shots fired, to fights at the parking lot behind City Hall. They're pretty much, that night wasn't something that you hear about on a regular basis that I didn't get to see firsthand. And for me, I want to see something firsthand, because when I see it, I completely understand it and understand the gravity of it. So just wanted to say thanks for setting that up, and thank you to all the officers that were tolerant of my questions and allowed me to hang with them through the course of the evening. And, you know, when you sign a waiver of liability and you strap on a bulletproof vest and some of the things that I experienced, I'm glad I was around them during that night. So we still have a lot of work to do, but I'm glad you all are out there patrolling our streets and helping keep us safe. So thank you, chief. Also participated in hard hat and hand ceremony. That's a graduation ceremony that Mortenson puts on. This is their second one so far, where they reach out into the community and find those that would most likely never be exposed to having the ability to join the trades and go through an apprenticeship program, and quite frankly, probably change their lives and potentially change the lives for generations of their families. It was really cool to be at the Egyptian Theater, as I think it was seven of them are graduating that class and going on to help leave their fingerprint in our community by helping build the Meta Data Center. So it's just a great program that Meta puts on with Mortenson as well. I'm almost done, I swear. Also went to, again, I'll echo Alderman Verbic's comments with Opportunity DeKalb and their listening sessions. Pastor Mitchell and allowing New Hope to be open for one of those was absolutely fantastic. There was a great turnout at that one. And also went to University Village for another listening session, so it was great to hear from different members of Antiglen North from different areas and different perspectives. And there were a lot of common themes, but we also had some new ones that came up. So, you know, as we continue to make our decisions here at the council level, that feedback that we got tonight, the feedback we got two meetings ago, and these listening sessions were absolutely great. So I want to thank Opportunity DeKalb for setting those up. I also had the opportunity to read to a bunch of first graders at Lincoln Elementary School. I was terrified. I was sweating. I'm not kidding. I can face a group of hostile whatevers or a large group of people, but give me in front of a group of first graders, I was out of my element. But overall, I couldn't believe, I shouldn't say that, but I figured first graders would be a little squirrely, but they were so well behaved, their questions were phenomenal, and Mrs. Cardella, the teacher that ran that class, runs a tight ship. So it was, it was just a really cool experience, and I was grateful to have the opportunity to be able to do that. And lastly, along the idea of crime, I had an hour-long interview with WNIJ today about just that. And it's another way, Joe, getting the message out about what's been going on and what are we doing going forward. But this conversation is part of my daily life. My anxiety over it is high. I hear from it from all elements of our community. I can't say enough how important it is to me, and I know council, that we really figure out and address this, because again, everyone should be able to be safe. And there's a culminating moment for me that I'll get through, when we had the person that was shot on Ridge. City manager and Nicholas and I were on scene, and there's this little kid with his little backpack walking down the sidewalk, and he's heading home to the building where this happened outside. And when you think about that, that little kid coming home from school, and this is the environment that he is growing up in, we can't allow that. So we have to figure out this once and for all. And it is gonna take each and every one of us participating in that in order to get it done. So I implore all of you, if you have an opportunity to participate, to comment to us, contribute to your time, whatever it is, it's gonna take all of us to figure this out, but from a council level, from a city level, this is, this is a priority in one way or another. We're gonna get to the other side of this, and I know the way we're gonna do it is through community involvement, so that's all I got. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And to that end, I think you'll have something before you at the next council meeting that will be by way of a consideration, just for your guidance and direction. Two quick things. The, both of them related to our fire department. The new engine that council member Smith spoke of will need a little bit more work. There's gonna be some decals put on. We're doing training on it. It's a little bit different than any other engine that we have, and when that's all done and it's outfitted, got all the ladders on there and ready to go, shined up, we're gonna bring it, it'll be that, whatever council meeting follows that point, and we'll park it outside here, I think, with
That'd be cool.
All the fanfare we can bring to it. It's a, it's, it does lift the spirit to see that kind of thing going on.
Do we break a champagne bottle across the front of it?
No, I've adorned it.
That's bad? Okay. Thanks for letting me know that.
I attended a 911 service that was conducted at Station One yesterday, and it's, it's a moving service that our firefighters put on, lest we forget. And then worked much of the day, got home, and I was gonna watch football, but I was trying to find stuff, and I was on Channel Two, which is CBS on my TV, and I came in a little bit after the beginning of the 60 Minutes special on 911. And I recommend, if you can view this, it's stream, it was basically seen from the eyes of those who survived and those who were in a leadership position, and there are many who were who died. I think something like, how many battalion chiefs, 23, 40, whatever it was, including the fire chief. And it was very moving. I was crying throughout. It's, people who went in those buildings had a very good idea that they were not likely to come out, even before they learned that they were unstable and so forth. So very well done. That's all I'll say.
On the fire truck comment, you've, I've seen fire trucks and ambulances with barbed wire. I've seen them with hashtag probably DeKalb. I don't know if that is a complete departmental thing, but I would really love to, hope, I hope that that continues as we continue to outfit further vehicles, because it really does show the fire department's connection to our community. So that'd be really cool to see. So I'll be looking.
We usually have NIU figured probably out there.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, with that, we're gonna go ahead and move into executive session, and darn it, I closed my laptop, so I don't have the verbiage. Help me out with the verbiage on moving to executive session.
Motion to approve the executive session to discuss the sale or lease of real property as provided for in five ILCS 120/2 C6.
Thank you. And for the record, I will do that. I will ask for a motion to move to executive session to hold an executive session in order to discuss the sale or lease of real property as provided for in five ILCS 120/2 C6. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. With that, we are adjourned to, oh, 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 here we go. What'd I do?
We need a roll call, Mayor.
Oh, roll call, thank you.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.